Would you like to call the roll, Mary?
I guess so. I'll call the roll. I'm not, I don't see anyone on Zoom. Do we have any? How do I see the participants on Zoom?
Do you want to show them?
There's Mark, I think.
Yeah.
Great. I'll call roll. Mark Howell?
Doesn't.
We can't hear you, Mark. Very faint.
Let me try the audio settings. It looks like it's coming through on my end.
Sorry, everybody.
My microphone's turned up all the way. Maybe they can turn up the volume in the room?
Mark.
Can you hear me?
I'll keep going. Linda Escobedo?
Great.
Linda Escobedo's not here yet. Terry Ackerman?
Present.
Mr. Dane?
Present.
And myself, Mary Hartman, present.
We have a quorum, one way or another.
We do.
So we can start the first item of business on, at all of our meetings, because I haven't seen many of you before at our select board meetings. And this is actually, this is a great pleasure to see people actually showing up in person to talk about something that is of concern to them. And I can't tell you how much I appreciate the fact that people will take the time to actually show up in person. So I assume most of you are here on the same issue. And so perhaps if you have a representative who would like to speak on behalf of at least some of you, not to the exclusion of others, but to tell us what you've come for.
Okay, thank you. My name is Vicky Alani. I'm at 257 Commonwealth Avenue.
Can we turn this, can we turn the sound up and can you speak slower too?
Because I am. I can hear myself, but you can't. Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay.
Is that okay? Okay, sorry. Great. So I'd like to read the letter that we have submitted today to the select board so that everyone in the town could hear sort of the content of where we are through our process. So a growing number of Concord residents are concerned about the recent recommendation that dam removal is the preferred alternative approach to Warner's Pond's future.
Well, thank you. But I will just note that we do have a copy of that letter in our materials. So we will, but please go on.
Okay, thank you. I'll do a bridged version a little bit. So the proposed solution to the problems facing the pond is a dramatic departure from previous recommendations and even recently agreed upon management plans to improve the water quality, restore the habitat, enhance recreational opportunities in the pond. In fact, previous plans did not include dam removal as a possible alternative. The consequences of dam removal include the permanent loss of this historically and culturally significant 50-acre pond in the heart of West Concord. The loss of the biodiverse pond habitat and the introduction of a new set of questions and concerns for what would become of this drained pond area of 50 acres. Given the scale, importance, and permanence of this decision, we ask that the Select Board and the Natural Resources Commission work with members of the community in a committed collaboration to determine the future of Warner's Pond with greater consensus. This decision deserves thoughtful steps, considerate measures, and an open decision-making process that honors the entire community. Between September 5th and October 10th, we gathered over 814 petition signatures, that's about five minutes ago, so very fresh, from people who do not approve of draining Warner's Pond by removing the dam at Commonwealth Avenue and who urged the town of Concord to revisit other options. At least 580 of these signatures are from Concord voting residents, and the numbers continue to rise by the hour as the petition is still open. While collecting these signatures, the best part was that we had the opportunity to talk with residents and find out where the questions and confusion are. And we did discover that there is widespread confusion and misinformation surrounding Warner's Pond. People expressed interest in far more opportunities to better understand what's going on and to be a part of planning the path forward. The pond is such a dynamic space with far-reaching effects for our community. And residents would like to understand how other town leaders, boards, and committees can be more involved in the process moving forward. We will continue to engage with conversations with our residents and find out more and where the questions are and how we can be more helpful in closing up some of these questions. The Friends of Warner's Pond, which is a group of Concord residents who worked together to create this petition and gather these signatures, now has the responsibility of ensuring these voices within our community are heard and are part of the process. And we want to have them help us to advocate for inclusive, meaningful dialogue around the options for the pond. With this in mind, we request your support in the formation of a new committee or task force named Friends of Warner's Pond that is officially recognized by the town of Concord. This group currently acts as stewards of the pond and liaisons for residents who care for it. Moving forward, Friends of Warner's Pond would like to work with the Select Board to determine how this group can best support the town of Concord and its residents in fully exploring alternatives and options. Lastly, we'd like to start this collaboration by inviting the Select Board members and the NRC members to visit the pond for a guided tour on the waters of Friends of Warner's Pond. Sincerely, Friends of Warner's Pond. I'd like to add that we have thoughts on this process and are here tonight to really ask you for the next steps with the board so that we can continue to move forward in this open dialogue. And with that, we'd like to submit the package with all of the signatures to you and really ask
Thank you.
what we should be doing next together.
Thank you. This is a very impressive document. And as I said, I appreciate the involvement of everybody in this. Now, we have time for, we have time for more people to speak if anyone wants to add anything, either on this subject or any other matter of public comment that is not on the agenda for discussion this meeting. And if you, is that what you're saying? Can you hear me now? Yes, okay, good. I'm saying that if there's anybody else who'd like to say anything, we have allowed 20 minutes total time for public comment this evening. And members of the audience here are free to add anything on this subject or any other subject of public comment. And please don't think that if you don't get to speak that you've wasted your time by showing up.
Henry, can I just clarify? You say you've seen the document and I'm not sure where it is. Is it, it's not in the packet, right?
It is not in the packet. It was received by email. Separate email.
Shannon doesn't have it either. I don't think I have it either.
We, we got this big, long email. Lots of attachments.
I don't think I have it either.
Well, we will distribute it, but the letter has been written. And we have a petition which has a large number of signatures on it. And again, I appreciate the fact that, that the effort that has gone into this in order to express this opinion rather than having these hundreds of cut-and-paste emails.
I agree. I'd be very interested in that comment. Thank you.
So because those just become an annoyance when you get 150 or 200 emails that say exactly the same thing because they've just been circulated by email and people don't even have to spend 65 cents for the postage to mail it. So, and so I think the back was the first to raise his hand.
Thank you.
The, Martha. We keep, we try to keep the comments to three minutes each.
I should be less.
Which is one minute more than you get at the town meeting.
Okay, fantastic. Mark Argazio, 142 Chestnut Street. I'm here regarding the residential exemption the Select Board will be voting on in November. First, on the assessor's website, it states the town of Concord Select Board instituted the policy. My understanding is the policy needs to be voted on in November to be instituted. I would request this inaccuracy to be corrected on the website. Secondly, the only effect of the policy noted on the website is that it will lower the assessed values of primary residences for tax purposes. After listening to the Select Board meetings that discussed the policy, it appeared the primary effect the Select Board was seeking was to transfer the burden of any upcoming increase in real estate taxes from some residents to other residents, depending on which house you live in and its assessed value. I believe this, this effect is very important for the residents to understand and should be disclosed on the website. And as it accomplishes your, your objective, I would think that you'd want to advertise it. Additionally, since the policy will increase the cost for every rental property in town, I think the website should disclose the risk that the policy may result in higher rental rates across the town of Concord. And then finally, if there are any Select Board members that will be voting on this policy in November that will benefit financially at the expense of other residents by effectively transferring your tax obligations to other residents, again, depending on what house you live in, I see this as a conflict of interest that needs to be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. I received, I think you sent a letter today earlier.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you.
Hello, Mark Alist, 62 Prescott Road. I just wanted to share that I find it a little challenging to speak on more or less mundane matters related to the town, given the horrors that have been happening in Israel and Gaza and falling on the heels of Azerbaijan's rejection of 100,000 Armenians. And
Mark, can you speak up?
Falling on the heels of the horrors in Israel and the West Bank that are occurring, the threat of more war, the expulsion of 100,000 Armenians from their homes by Azerbaijan, following on the Russian invasion of Ukraine and all the other wars. I only hope things don't get worse, et cetera. Nevertheless, I have something local to just mention. I, I'm a member of the Transportation Advisory Committee, the TAC, but speaking for myself, it is likely that Ms. Ackerman will refer to this later, but I wanted to announce it here for everyone's information. The town has hired a consulting firm, Stan Tech, to assist it in performing a year-long comprehensive transportation study. The public kickoff will be a drop-in session for all members of the public, those who live in town, work in town, own businesses in town, visit Concord, et cetera. It will take place next Tuesday evening, October 17th, between 6:30 and 8:30 PM at the Harvey Wheeler Community Center, drop-in at any point. Please note that the TAC did not select the consultant and it is the town staff and not the TAC, you know, citizen volunteer committee that will be managing the consultant and its work. The TAC will presumably continue deliberating at its meetings to determine its own engagement with the study. Tonight at 7:30 PM, the TAC will meet and discuss modifications to the first draft of a transportation survey which was prepared by the consultant. Several TAC members have submitted extended written suggestions for improvements to the survey, all of which are posted for the public on the TAC's webpage. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. And I think Shannon has flyers for that TAC meeting next Tuesday. Oh, they're right on that table here. Just, it's a drop-in. We want to get good attendance and you don't have to be there the whole time. So please take one on your way out.
Yes.
My name is Denise Gilbert. I live in Concord. And I simply want to emphasize the importance and the power of the caring for a little pond that is existing in this room. That there is tremendous emotion behind it, but also there is the science behind it. We all wish to understand more and we really implore you to look into this carefully and to please go and spend some time looking at this pond. Put your phones down and look, because this is for our children and this is for generations to come.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Enoch Hart Boesberg, 48 Lawsbury Road. Actually, I have a question. And my question is, why is a surveyor, he's been surveying the dam for about two days now? Why is that?
Well, I'd say two things. I don't know. Do we know anything about a surveyor? Working on, is he working on the pond?
Apparently he works for SGC surveyors. And he's, he actually walked into somebody's backyard without asking permission. But he's been there for at least two days and he's surveying the dam and we don't know why.
I don't think we know either, but but this is typically not a question and answer period. It's
Warner's Pond dam.
It's, it's, if we know a quick answer to a factual question.
Delia K, Natural Resources Director is here and she could give you a quick answer to that question.
Good evening, Delia K, Natural Resources Director. Excuse me. And there is a surveyor or team of surveyors out who are, or who is collecting additional information on the bathymetry of the pond as well as the elevations of the dam and additional structures in the vicinity of the dam. That's part of the current design phase as part of the 30% design plans for dam removal.
I'd like to add to that. I think it's important to remind people that the dam is not going to be removed without a vote of town meeting. So there might be people out there taking measurements, but nothing's going to happen to the dam without a vote of town meeting.
So I would also add that as part of this design phase, there is additional community input. We have three public meetings. There is one that will be held on November 8th in this room. And the purpose of that meeting is to evaluate all of the alternatives that the town has studied at the pond since the mid 1990s, the implementations that have occurred and to talk about whether there are additional alternatives, such as whether people have additional ideas that we can consider. Thank you.
Hello. I am Dr. Karen Hodges. I'm a licensed psychologist and I have a business here in town as well as a company focused on supporting adults to take good care of kids, basically, in a nutshell. And I'm a resident in Concord. I, I find this whole idea of removing a water source very problematic, the idea even of it right now. And where I'm coming from is that of a licensed psychologist who specializes with kids. So, you know, not everybody leaves town in the summer. Not everyone has the financial resources to entertain themselves and to stay cool in the summer. And there are a lot of kids who are sleep deprived, who are not getting enough exercise and who could benefit from recreational activities in this town still. So I just want to highlight that there are a lot of children in this town who are suffering from mental health issues and they are very preventable, mental health issues. And we prevent these things with family connection, human connection, exercise, sleep, and getting off technology too, sometimes. So I hope that's helpful to just think about when we're thinking about this, that we really do need places to cool down. We need places for kids to exercise. We need places for families to gather. And we need places to, to join together as a community as we have with Warner's Pond. So those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Mark Boesberg. I live at 48 Lawsbury Road for 40 years now. And my question is, if they're surveying the dam, why, where'd the money come from to do this? What, why are you spending money to, why are you spending town money for something that may not happen? Because it is possible that the town will decide not to remove the dam. So why, why, and where'd the money come from to do this? I mean, I remember in 2018, a town meeting, we approved expenditures for Jero Park, millions of dollars. And part of that money was going to be used for dredging the pond. Indeed, a partial dredge, but nevertheless, money was set aside for that. And I would assume that money is still there. I certainly hope that it isn't being used for other purposes. Anyway, that's what I needed to say. Thanks.
Well, I would, not to, not to get involved in a conversation on that subject, but I think we spend, we spend money on a lot of things that don't happen. And sometimes the things that you don't do are the best investment you can make.
Yeah, I believe that that money was approved at town meeting. But maybe on the November 8th public hearing, we could discuss this in more detail, does that make more sense? If we wait until then to discuss it?
Hmm?
At the public hearing on November 8th?
Yeah, but we want to give people a chance to kind of
Right, but to answer all of those questions on that, at that public hearing, yeah.
Yes, thank you.
Jimmy Twofeathers, 303 Commonwealth Ave, Concord, Mass. I'm in a butter to the road and my backyard is where the boats get launched. So I get to see every day the traffic and the people that come to use the pond all year round, skaters, the fish of it. And, but what I want to speak to right now is the wildlife. Now, the, the, what I say, folks who are really conservationists and extreme on one side want to knock all the dams down so the fish can swim up the streams. But they haven't done that in over 100 years. I question whether the fish are even there anymore for that. And the turtles, the eastern painted turtles who are not protected, but I believe that their breeding area could be protected because they have a gyro compass in their head. They come back to the same place where they were born. I have painted turtles coming up into my backyard in the springtime. And I use wire cages to protect the eggs so the skunks don't eat them that night. I'm trying to get the turtles, hey, go over to the island where there's no skunks, but they haven't figured that out yet. So I want to represent the animals that are there and what would happen to them if we turned Warner's Pond into a mud puddle? What would happen to my backyard? And also what would happen to our property values if we all of a sudden were butters to a mud puddle? Who's going to help cover for those expenses? I think there are real extremes with environmental issues. I know my friends in California have issues now with the forest fires because the extreme environmentalists wouldn't let them clear out any of the brush underneath in the forest. And so now it's burning. So, you know, we need to look at all these aspects and not go from one extreme to another. I would like to find ways to clean up the pond and protect it, but not turn it into a mud puddle. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Nina Huber. I live in West Concord, near the pond. And I've lived here for 25 years, actually a little more. The things that keep running around in my head that I don't understand and I hope you'll consider are, number one, I remember years ago, there was a really bad flood. And I think it was before the new dam was built. But it, it just wiped out the wall in front of the Shoba Brook Bakery, caused a lot of damage and so on. I mean, we've all seen the terrible and surprising flooding that's happened in Vermont and elsewhere these days with, looks like climate change, climate changing. In any event, I'm concerned about that. I mean, I thought that's why we built the new dam. And I'm concerned that we spent all this money to build this beautiful new dam not long ago. And now we're saying, oh yeah, we, we're going to pull it down for a reason that's not clear to me. And the last thing is, I mean, my understanding is it has something to do with Bill Ricker and some kind of fish weir they want to do or something like that and get the fish flowing again. I don't understand that. And the other thing that bothers me is the, someone mentioned the Jero property that I thought we had an agreement, you know, that all came about because the Jeros could have sold that land at a very high price to developers and instead they worked with the town and to preserve that land and to, under the understanding that we would make it a recreational area for the town. And so now we're, and we've built part of it, but now we're sort of saying, no, we're just going to let that pond become part of a, a brook or a mud puddle, as Jimmy said. Those are the, the three things that I'm wondering about, you know, keeping to our word on the Jero property to, you know, flooding. And I forgot the third one.
Seth, thank you. We have, we have time for one more speaker, so you can fight for the privilege. Or if there is none, we can, then we will just move to the Select Board room. And those of you who want to follow us for the rest of the meeting are welcome to do so if you can fit in. But we really appreciate your coming and, you know, this is something that is of, you know, this is something that is of great concern for, to us. It has potential environmental and social impacts on the town, its history and its culture. And one of the things we have to think about is what the urgency is to do anything at all. Because nature does take its course if we let it. So anyway, thank you for coming. We have your petition. And please feel free to, you know, send us cards and letters. And we're, now we're going to adjourn to the Select Board room.
I'm wondering if you can hear me now?
Yes.
I can hear you, Mark. I'm on Zoom, so.
Yeah, thanks, Diane. So it's, whatever's going on is going on in the Select Board room. Could you hear me before when I was trying to say I was present?
Yes, we could. It's Carlin.
Thank you, Carlin. Thank you, Carlin. All right. I've been trying to communicate with, well, Shannon told me that M M M was gonna try and work on it.
I'd like to be added to the chat.
I think you can chat directly with Shannon because she's the host. But there isn't, there isn't a a group chat as far as I know.
You're correct. There's not a group chat enabled on this on this particular program. Thank you, Mark.
So we've run into this before where they didn't have the ability to hear anybody from Zoom.
Oh, we don't have to, never mind. It wasn't a public hearing.
Okay, so can you guys hear us at all? No.
Hey.
Mark, we can hear you now if you can hear me.
Oh, thank you.
When you get the chance, you can do one most flyers.
We are now reconvening the meeting which we started in the public hearing room in the select board room, and we're going to continue with the next item on the agenda, which is the consent agenda. Madam Clerk.
Uh, move to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? Then I'll take a roll called votes. Um, Mr. Howell.
Hi.
Ms. Ackerman.
Aye.
Mr. Dane.
Aye.
And myself, Mary Hartman, aye. We should pause and thank both gaining ground for donating the brush mower and Jane Prentice for donating Cedar Signals at the White Pond. And um, it's very much appreciated. I know that Jane does a lot for White Pond, and this is just one more thing that she's done. And I don't know the gaining ground people, but I know they're generous. So, thank you.
All right, we have um, next.
Appointments?
I'm not taking my phone messages. I'm adjusting my hearing aid.
That's okay.
So um, the uh, next item is the um, committee nominations.
Um, I think the next, oh, I we don't have any nominations, do we?
They're on the consent.
Oh, we don't have to.
We have an appointment.
We don't have to approve those. We just have to um, approve the the um.
Appointments.
Appointments. Okay, right. Let me get my papers straight here. Move to appoint Anthony M. Anasaldi to the position of Treasurer Collector effective October 16th, 2023. Should I do them all at once, or do we want to?
You want to do that, take a motion and then I'll speak.
Great, good. So I made the motion.
A second.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, Anthony. Maybe you could step up to the podium. Uh, I'm pleased to announce the appointment of Anthony Anasaldi to the position of Chief Financial Officer. Uh, we did go through a process. We had a number of well-qualified candidates and Anthony emerged as the top candidate. He brings over two decades of experience in local government, finance and operations to to the position. His professional experience includes overseeing multimillion dollar budgets, capital projects, collective bargaining agreements and significant grant funding. In his most recent role as Town Administrator for the town of Littleton, he revamped the town's $64 million operating and capital budget process. Um, he holds a master's in public administration degree and a graduate certificate in local government leadership and management from Suffolk University. He is a certified public purchasing official, a member of both the Massachusetts Municipal Association and the International City Management Association. He also serves as a governor's appointee to the JLMC, which is the Joint Labor Management Committee. Um, I I will note that in this role, Anthony will serve both as the Chief Financial Officer and the town's appointed Treasurer Collector. While the position of CFO is appointed by the town manager, the position of Treasurer Collector is one of two positions that under section charter, section two D one is appointed by the town manager but must also be approved by the select board. And that's why this appointment is before you this evening. Mr. Anasaldi is at the podium. I know you've all had the opportunity to to meet him, but he is available for questions. And I did notice he was sitting with his former employer, retired town administrator Keith Bergman, who is actually nice that we could reunite reunite the two of you this evening. Are there any questions either for me or for Mr. Anasaldi?
Anthony, why would you want the job?
He's here, you can ask him.
It's a wonderful, wonderful community, and I look forward to working with Kerry, uh, board, uh, the Finance Committee, the residents, um, to really just continue with the great uh, uh, governance that's been going on in Concord. So it's just an honor uh, to be given this opportunity.
That's what we like to hear.
That's right. Till you start tomorrow?
Monday.
That was a serious.
That was a serious question.
Monday, Monday.
Okay. First, no, you said, very good.
Well, I guess we have to take the vote before we welcome.
We do, we do. Um, Mr. Howell.
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman.
Aye.
Mr. Dane.
Aye.
And myself, Mary Hartman, aye, welcome.
Welcome.
Welcome. Best of luck.
Thank you very much.
Welcome to the team.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna do the next three appointments altogether. Um, move to appoint Mark Howell of the Select Board to the Financial Audit Advisory Committee for the retroactive term of June 1, 2023 to May 31, 2024. Move to appoint Court Booth of the School Committee to the Financial Audit Advisory Committee for the retroactive term of June 1, 2023 to May 31, 2024. Move to appoint Bianca Taylor of the Municipal Light Board to the Financial Audit Advisory Committee for the retroactive term of June 8, 2023 to May 31, 2024.
Why is that when June 8? Should that be June 1?
No, she was appointed to the Light Board on June.
I see. Okay. All right, second.
Uh, Mr. Howell.
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman.
Aye.
Mr. Dane.
Aye.
And myself, Mary Hartman, aye. Very good.
Okay, uh, town managers report.
Okay, thank you. Earlier today, I did distribute a report for the week ending October 6, 2023. I wanted to highlight that on Sunday, October 1st, the library celebrated its 150th anniversary. There were a number of events that happened that weekend, really terrific participation and great weather for the outdoor events. There's more information in the packet on on all of the specifics for for the different celebrations. Also wanted to mention that on that same day, October 1st, the light plant with the Sustainability Department co-sponsored an EV test drive event at the high school parking lot. A hundred and 28 people test drove EVs that were provided by 17 area dealers. Uh, a great event, a lot of participation. Um, I previously mentioned to you before that Concord is one of only three communities that has a EV adoption rate of over 5%. And I'm hoping this event was able to help convince people that that EV vehicles are um, what we all should be looking at and um, maybe we'll increase that that percentage to even higher than just over 5%. The MBTA Communities zoning uh, update, the Planning Board continues to work on developing a proposed warrant article for the 2024 Annual Town Meeting. The town's GIS consultant is taking feedback from the September 20 Community Workshop and comments from the Planning Board's September 26th meeting and is putting together draft option one, which will be presented on October 24th at the Planning Board meeting. Um, also wanted to mention additional news out of DPLM that we submitted two grants this past week for the federal DOT's Reconnecting Communities and Neighborhoods Grant Program. One of the grants was for some fu- funding for a feasibility study for pedestrian pedestrian crossing across Route 2. The other was uh, $400,000 for the, which would be used for the completion of the mass DOT 100% construction plans for the Assebit River Bridge. During the public comment section, Mark Galis mentioned the transportation study, the kickoff of that, so I will skip over that. Um, the town received three responses from Historic Preservation Consultants for the community-wide Historic Preservation Plan uh, RFQ that was out recently. Uh, this will be funded in part through a $25,000 grant from the Massachusetts Historical Commission. The CPC Committee is currently reviewing the 19 applications that were received in response to the fiscal 25 funding round. Site visits and applicant presentations began in mid-September and will continue through November 1st. Our sustainability, uh, Director of Sustainability co-hosted a meeting with the Concord Business Partnership on Wednesday, September 13th. It was a a really well-attended event. There were several presentations, including one of the owners of the 300 Baker Ave property, talking about how to electrify buildings and um, funding sources that are available for that. I did want to also mention that the light plant has its open house this Saturday, the 14th, from 10 a.m. to 2 p.m. I wanted to provide a brief update on the Jarrow project. Uh, we have been successful in negotiating two change orders required to close out the project. The first change order is with the Engineer Project Manager GPI. The second is with the Contractor Coal Construction. The the change orders require substantial completion of the project by December 31st, 2023. And as of last Friday, the contractor was on site and had remobilized and started work. So that is um, but the report that I received from the town engineer was the contractor was out clearing brush.
Well, I was there today and there was nothing. No, no work was happening today. And it looked the exact same. It looked the same as it looked three weeks ago, which is.
I can follow up. I I asked for an update today, and that was the update that I received. I have not been out to the the site today.
I wonder if we could have an update on the Jarrow um, project at every select board meeting so that we actually because I I am concerned about meeting the December 31st date, especially since uh, nothing's happening. Uh, and I'm sorry. What what can I ask another question?
Of course.
Good. And I'm also, I, Carrie, could you give us an update on what's happening with the cell tower? So the cellphone coverage?
Yes, Megan will provide that update, group.
Okay, thank you. Um, so the Tricon Church has been working with a consultant who has been negotiating with a Verizon Wireless Consultant for approximately one year. I have spoken to both a Verizon consultant and a representative from the Tricon Church. And I understand that the parties are not in agreement regarding a few contract terms. So staff is working with both parties to encourage the execution of a successful agreement. Um, but this negotiation, it's a private agreement, um, so I have not been privy to all the contract details. Um, but we are working with them to try to move towards a solution there. There is also the issue of cell phone service over by Concord Carlisle High School and Route 2. Um, the update there is that Jason Jason Bulger, the Chief Technology Officer, and myself met with the School Committee on August 22nd. Jason discussed the history of wireless coverage, um, how we adequately can cover that area. And we discussed the criteria for the selection um, of a site, including coverage, aesthetics and sighting. Um, and the timeline required for how quickly we can move forward with a tower. Um, so Jason explained at that meeting that the campus, the CCHS campus, would provide the best coverage um, for the campus, and it would also have the the fastest timeline. Um, moving forward on a tower in that area would not help the downtown. They're two separate, two separate areas. But um, a lot of people, including the board and staff, are concerned about cell service in town, obviously. We have testimonials from public safety officials, police, fire, public works. We've had some recent communication issues um, during last month's storms between staff and and emergency um, response. Um, I've heard from parents having trouble reaching their children at school. And I've also heard concerns from folks about um, radio frequencies and concerns about that if we were to move forward with with some towers here. So on October 19th, from 5 to 7 p.m., we're having a listening session in the public hearing room to hear from the public about their concerns so that we can try to address them and and move forward with the plan that meets the critical needs of the community. Yeah.
Um, can I ask, um, I plan to go to that cell tower listening session. And I'm just wondering, um, are you, is it just going to be basically that you're going to say what you just said? And we're going to listen to people who are having problems? Um, or what what is going to happen at that session?
Sure, there'll be a presentation for about the first 45 minutes to an hour about the different sites that have been explored. The different um, reasons why they haven't been pursued and the work, kind of, why are we here? Why do we not have service in these two major areas? What decisions have been made or not made to this point? Where can we go from here?
Where can we go from here? That's the important thing, yeah.
And giving people an opportunity to discuss their their concerns um,
Okay.
about this issue and and all aspects of the issue. We're welcoming folks to share any concerns that they have and and discuss a path forward.
Okay.
I I'm making this a priority for myself. Become involved in this and to make sure that we get this job done. Uh, I had a meeting with uh, the um, with the parish director at Tricon uh, last last week. And I think I came to a much better understanding of what the issues, the outstanding issues were. And I think I know how we can address those issues and get them resolved. Um, I think it's important that we focus on making that project happen. And that as in in my, the way I see it, um, the way to make sure that 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 cell tower uh, becomes a reality within a reasonable period of time is to make very clear that none of the other options are acceptable. And I think they become distractions um, until we get this one done. And we have to focus on getting that done and do what needs to be done. I mean, this is, uh, I have, I have a long letter today from the new Strategic Planning Director of the Colonial Inn, who says they can't do business with a lot of their customers and people are not coming back to the hotel because cell service is not available, which is essential to having guests be in your hotel. It's essential for tourism. It's essential for business. It's essential for public safety. And we have to get it done. I wouldn't say no matter what it costs, but I will say almost no matter what it costs and what we have to do to to make that a reality. Um, so um, uh, I think that's where our focus needs to be, is find out exactly what the impediments are to getting uh, an agreement and getting the construction done and then addressing those and doing what the town can in order to uh, smooth away.
Can we, are we expanding our scope, though, to look at? I know now we're focused on uh, downtown, the center of Concord. We're talking next about the schools. What about West Concord or other neighborhoods within town that are aren't served well? Do, are we looking at those at all? Or are we?
The only ones that I I'm aware of that we are now looking at is the high school issue. And uh, that is um, um, it's unclear what the resolution of that one is. I got new reports, I think today about, um, or maybe it was a letter from somebody who had um, point of view about whether the best site would be uh, the uh, whether the best site would be the, what do we call that thing now? The, not the dump? What are we calling that?
The landfill.
The landfill. And, or on the high school campus or whatever, and it's not clear what coverage results from the different locations, but we do know that there is a problem we can solve in a location that we think is available, has, it will be, has a short path toward permitting because it was previously permitted. We have parties who are interested in making it happen, and that's where we can get it done if we put our minds to it, you know. I hope by the end of this fiscal year.
I think that would be wonderful, and I'm glad that it's a priority for you, Henry. I am, and I'm glad you're on the job. Just, I'm just asking, I'm asking if we could, once we get these two, we could expand it because I know that there's other areas within town that have very bad cellphone coverage and this, you know, they're just waiting. So I just want to make sure that we keep that on, on our horizon.
I agree. That's, that's important, but I don't want to lose focus on the one that we think that we can do.
It's the linchpin, you're right.
So getting back to this listening session, I'm, I'm really excited that it's going to be a big priority. Will representatives from Tricon, from the high school, be there from, from Verizon? Will they be there?
Yes.
Great.
Good, yes.
Okay, thank you for organizing that. And I have one more question, getting back to Carrie's main report. Good news on Jarrow and on the grants for transportation. And what I was trying to figure out is on the Assabit River Bridge. I think you said there is a grant that we've applied for, for four hundred thousand dollars?
That's correct.
And I thought I saw another two hundred thousand dollars. Is that a CPC match for this? For the, for the design of the bridge?
There, there is a CPC application, and there's also an application for a Mass Trails grant. I believe those are two hundred thousand each.
So the total is eight hundred thousand?
No, this has been a long process to get to where we are today with, with design. And there's still more, more to come. This is, this is the next phase of design. The funding strategy was to try to diversify and.
Yeah, yeah, I remember. I was on CPC in two thousand seventeen and we were doing design funds then.
Yeah, when we get on the, the mass DOT tip plan, it, it's a long process.
Okay.
I want to go back to Jarrow for a minute. Tonight, when we were listening to people talking about Warner's Pond, there seems to be an expectation that Jarrow is going to be something that I'm not sure is in the plan or in the budget. So I think, I, I would like for myself some clarity because I know way back when we first allocated the money, we had grand plans for Jarrow. And I know now, given that the costs of construction have gone up so high, and so our, our plans there have scaled back quite a bit to be a lot more passive recreation as opposed to active recreation. And I think people, I think it would be good for people to understand that. So that's another reason why, you know, I, I'm concerned about Jarrow.
That's a good point. I have the same concern. And again, I think on November eighth, when we have that public forum,
Yeah, if we were clear.
Really be clear about.
Yeah, what's, what's, what's the plan for Jarrow?
Right. The, the only phase of development that has any funding is phase one, and, and I think we've referred to that as one A and one B.
Yep.
B being removal of invasive species. That, that's the only additional funding other than the passive.
This is on plan. This is on.
I agree with Mary that tonight, I think we heard people expecting, you know, a place for children to cool down and all, and all of these are the things that I'm not sure if we are planning for those things. So.
I don't, I'm not sure that was ever in the plan.
Well, whatever. I think we need some clarity there.
We do. We just need, yes.
You did. I can't. Oh, Mark, where are you?
Hi, I'm here. I, I was going to raise the point that the chairman was raising, and probably I shouldn't amplify it, that we should be expecting the cellular carriers, not only Verizon, but T-Mobile and AT&amp;T, to come and explain to us why coverage in our town is so poor. I thought Ms. Breyagian's letter that we received today raised an interesting point, pointing out that Verizon in particular has a service location on Emerson Hospital, which is just one point four miles away from the high school. And I think most credible wireless engineers would expect that within one point five miles of, of a tower, one should be able to get service. So I think there's deficiencies in the capabilities of the existing provider networks, and we should be asking them what they're planning to do about it. Many of us that follow the industry know that they are in the process of doing 5G transitions in some cases, which typically means the removal of some of the antennas that were longer range, that were associated with the 3G service. And I think it, as customers, all of us should be expecting that these transitions to these newer services don't lead to service reductions from their existing locations.
Do we have any ability to influence those choices? I mean, do they need anything from us in terms of permitting or licensing or?
I think that's, those are, those are useful questions to ask, and I think that these, the representatives of these enterprises should be willing to come and hear from customers in a community where it's broadly acknowledged that their service is is less than adequate. And so I, while I'm sympathetic to the members of the community who would like us to do something about it, we do need to recognize that these are services that are provided by commercial entities. And if those services are inadequate, we should be asking those providers to do a better job and let us know what it is they might need in order to do that job.
Thank you. All right. What, what, what are we up to now?
Your chair's report, your report.
Oh, my report.
You, you do have a public hearing posted at seven o'clock, too.
Yes, we do. And my, my report will be over at exactly seven o'clock. So I, I think I've given the most important part of my report, which is the, the part of it that relates to the cell tower. I just also want to mention some things that people should be aware of, and one is on the fifteenth, from one to three, the town clerk and, and I are giving a, a, a work, a workshop in town government, governance, primarily for the benefit of committee chairs for details of open meeting law, of agendas, minutes, and other things that people need to refresh her on to be effective chair, to run effective committees.
And I think you should include vice chairs who are going to become the chairs in a few months.
Well, I think anyone, I, as far as I know, it's totally open. Anybody can walk in.
Right.
So that I will, I, I will not emphasize this at the Chair's Breakfast, which is on the eighteenth, which is three days after that meeting.
Oh, okay.
But there is a Chair's Breakfast on the eighteenth, and on the nineteenth, there is the cell tower listening meeting. The first hearing on the forty-B project, the Nova project, is being held by the zoning board of appeals on the twenty-sixth at Harvey Wheeler, am I right? And that's something that we, many of us will probably want to be present at. I note with, not glee, but with approval, that the, the zoning board of appeals will be holding the, those hearings will be hybrid, and the, the zoning board will be present in person. On the twentieth, a relic of the past, we are welcoming representatives of Nani in Japan, our Japanese sister city, which will be, there will be a ceremony at the Art Association starting around eight o'clock in the evening on Saturday, the twenty-ninth. And finally, the League of Women Voters on the second of November is running a, running a, a session on on town meeting issues, and I assume on how to improve or to gather ideas on how we can improve town meeting. And I think that's an, an issue that is of, been of concern to us. And I hope that members of the board will attend that or send me their ideas and their thoughts. Every time I see something happening, I get a thought about, for instance, like the public comment this morning, this, this evening, about how groups of, groups of people who have a point of view about a particular issue are not organized to have somebody make a presentation on that issue, the way the planning board or the finance committee makes a presentation on the issue. And so it breaks down with people getting up to, in a series of people speaking for two minutes and frequently saying the same thing over and over again, when it might be much more effective for them to be able to designate members of their group who could speak for five or more minutes and actually.
Right.
So on. And there are many ideas that would improve, that could improve the process of town meeting, and it is now.
Henry, can you just say again, the Nani Japan event?
Yes.
What was that again?
It was, it's the, it, it's the, the ceremony is on the evening of the twenty-ninth, but they arrive at the airport on the twenty-eighth. I have the whole program, which I can send to you.
Yeah, that's great.
I think, wasn't, I think, wasn't Mike, what's going to be here tonight?
He'll be on tonight.
He will be on, so he can talk about it.
All right, great.
Because he wants us to, we need to adopt the proclamation.
Okay.
Okay, so now it being seven oh two, I will entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
Mr. Hall.
Hi.
The sacrament.
Hi.
Hi. All right, we have representatives of the applicant or the applicant himself here. How do you want to proceed?
Can you come up to the, just the microphones are first zoomed.
Pardon me, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Andrew Sprow. I'm here in behalf of the applicant who is Melendez Magana Inc. This is Elmer Melendez. He is the principal of the applicant. What is before the board today is a Section twelve application for a new liquor license, all alcoholic beverages, so-called pouring permit at one ninety-five Sudbury Road. We are here to address any inquiries that the board may have, and we are here to ask the select board to pass favorably on this application.
Yes.
I do have a few questions.
Please.
Thank you. You're going into where Seraphina's used to be. It would be good to have a restaurant there. Again, I have a few questions. First of all, I went to your, looked at the reviews for some of the restaurants that you already have in Pittsburgh and in Devon's, that you've got good reviews, good service especially. So that was, that was a good sign. How much of your business will be takeout?
Mary, Mary, we can't hear you. I don't know why your microphone is not working very well, but thank you.
Because I didn't press the button, Diane, sorry.
Okay, that's great. Thank you.
I was just saying, let me repeat quickly, that Mr. Menendez's restaurants in Pittsburgh and Devon's get really good reviews on Facebook for the service. This will be at the old Seraphina's site. What else did we talk about? And then I asked, how much would be takeout?
Yeah, takeout is, after COVID, nineteen, takeout went a good fifteen to twenty percent. People coming back to the restaurants, they really enjoying to be into the restaurant. But we are still doing a good twenty percent takeout business.
Okay, is that what you're expecting here in Concord? Twenty, about twenty percent?
Yes, I think good twenty percent is will be, in what we, will be normal for us.
Okay, I have one more question. When I read reviews of restaurants, they usually put like dollar signs next to the restaurants, whether it's, you know, fine dining or, but what, where do you, where do you fit in that? Twenty, twenty dollars?
Two, two to three.
Two, two to three.
It's like, exactly like them. We use Bandoleros Demens.
Okay.
And we have the opportunity, we want to have the opportunity to have a restaurant here in Concord, and actually, I used to work in Seraphina's.
Oh, really?
And last year, actually yesterday, twenty years ago, I started to work in Seraphina's.
Wow.
Columbus Day, nineteen, two thousand and three, I started to work in Seraphina's.
So you've come back around.
Twenty years later, we here in, here for a liquor license. It's like, I can, I'm very grateful. But yes, with, our goal is bring, if you see my slogans in the Mexican restaurants, a true taste of Mexico. Who make tortillas. We have Chef Luis with us here, that he's the, the main creating all the Mexican food and fresh made drinks and, and be a community, a community restaurant.
It's mostly families?
It's a family, yeah.
Okay.
I have a couple of questions. I did look at your menu in Devon's, and it looks really good, really, really good. So that's great. Are you going to have probably about the same menu?
We want to do, sometimes we have to adjust.
Yeah, yeah.
And then, and then the demographic, but yes, we want to have the, it's a lot, it's some basic items, like we, I proud to call it true, true, true Mexican food.
Right.
Carnitas, birrias, who make tortillas, chicharrones, aguachiles.
Right.
It's things that we really bring a hundred percent the roots of Mexico.
Right. It looks more authentic than some, yeah. And I, I'm vegetarian, so I was very interested in, you have portobello and.
We, we can take care of it, too.
Yeah. I'm also interested in the name. Bandoleros is, it's kind of like banditos.
Yeah, Bandoleros is literally aula. It is what it is. Everything started for me with Bandoleros, and I have that name for a good twenty years or fifteen years. I was reading about Mexico Revolution, and it's, 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 it's how happened that in nineteen ten, they have a revolution and they have some people that was running the country. And after they was running the country, the revolution flipped everything out and they become a Bandoleros.
Right.
They become a aula. When they was in the, literally running the country now, they was, they was, they was chasing them. They, they was a, they become a aula. They become a Bandoleros.
So does your decor have a lot of guns and, and, you know?
Not really. We, we look into that rustic, fresh, modern, a little bit. We, we have very, we don't go with too much color, you know, color, piñata things, because Mexico is more than that.
Right.
Mexico is not just like Fiesta todos los días. It's like, it's, it's very nice. You will like it. It's more like hacienda kind of.
Okay.
Look, yeah.
I have a few questions about the, the, the financing and the leasing.
Yep.
I, I see that the, you entered into this lease for this space in May fifteenth.
Yes, we started to work.
The lease called for you to file an application for the license within thirty days, and now it is like four months later.
Yes.
And can you explain why it took so long?
Yes, and if you can read in my, one of my amendment in my lease, they have to have a sewer, drainage and water ready for me. And they send cameras to all the drainage, and they know, they know good. Now they fixing everything. And I, I don't want to apply for a liquor license if they don't going to fix all that drainage, but they doing it in this point right now is what I hope. Couple more weeks, they will be done, but they did, they doing it. They fixing it. And that is the main reason why we, I told them, I said, how, I don't know if I can say this, but. I don't know if I can say this, but actually, I doing it. They will give me credit rent, because that will take maybe a couple more months to they doing it. And I say, I wanna move this. I, I have to hold Mr., uh, it's proud to, don't, uh, submit the application yet, because I said, we need today to make sure they come and fix my drainage, my, all, all my drainage line and, and, uh, building. And, uh, they said, ah, it's a lot of, a lot of tears to people. We have to ask these people, these people have to approve it, these other people have to approve this, they have to approve the plans. It's a lot of improvements going. And I, I call with Mr. Brian Daley, say, Mr. Brian, I need to apply for this equalizing. We need to fix the drains. You say, Omar, we can, we can do something, yes. Can you general contractor doing it? I said, we doing aesthetic inside, but I guess I assume he can do it. My general contractor giving them a quote. And, uh, they, they don't wanna, they, they kinda tried to step a little bit back. I said, why, let me do it and you give me a credit rent. This is how we fixed up. They give me credit rent and they, and we almost done with that.
So did they also extend the deadline by which you could
Oh, yes.
get the license?
We have everything, yes.
Okay. Um, on the, uh, the financial side of this,
Mm-hmm.
um, it shows, uh, the purchase price for business assets is eighty-five thousand dollars. What, what business assets are you, are you purchasing? You, you're not buying an existing business.
I think it's what I money they going to put for the equipment and
The, the expenses to this point have been for renovation costs for the, uh, physical premises and purchase of restaurant equipment and furniture.
Um, and so, uh, so, so it's not really for the purchase of the business, it's an investment in equipment.
And, and, uh,
Okay, and so then other, which is not specified, is forty-five thousand dollars, which gets the total amount of, to be invested in this is, um, a hundred and thirty thousand dollars, which seems an amazingly low number to start a new restaurant, which as I understand it, there was nothing there.
Um, what we did, we followed the floor plan that was there before.
You what?
The floor plans. We don't did any, we're going to do a lot of aesthetic. Like, uh, we don't, we don't knocking walls, we don't, we put the hood system is there. We using the hood system, we using the bathroom is there. Uh, e- everything that this room is there, we just have to buy the appliance.
But there's, there's, there's no, there was no kitchen equipment left there, was there?
The hood system is there.
And what?
Hood, hood system.
The hood.
Yeah.
The, the, the stoves, the
Oh, no, that we, we ordered, yeah, that is.
What?
No, no, we have to get that one, yeah.
But, and you can actually do that for a hundred and thirty thousand dollars?
Actually, I just opened a new restaurant in Pittsburgh. Yes, we do. Yeah.
Um, it, it seems like an extraordinary, extraordinary low, uh, cost in order to do that. And then you, you support that with a, uh, financial statement or a bank statement that shows bank accounts that, the purpose of having those in the application was to show that the funding necessary to, um, start the business is not from unknown sources, but is actually from you, the applicant yourself. And it, it, that, that statement doesn't show that you have assets of a hundred and thirty thousand, let alone what it's, I suspect the cost is gonna be substantially higher.
Yeah, Mr. Melendez is, is confident in, he's, that, that his financial planning is sufficient to, to make this concern, uh, operate. Um, if the board needs sort of any further delineation of his financial circumstance, we are happy to provide.
Well, the, the issue here is whether there are, um, um, undisclosed investors or undis- people who have an undisclosed interest in it. If, if the amount of money that is stated for, um, uh, startup, build out the startup is less than, than expected and the financial statement from the bank shows that the, uh, the applicant doesn't even have the hundred and thirty thousand, let alone what the additional amounts might be to. Um, I mean, I would expect that a, based on my experience in a, a restaurant with, uh, what it's, um, you're, you have, uh, a hundred, a hundred seats, is that what it is?
Hundred and two seats.
Hundred and two seats, you know, that, that would, um, that, that, that would cost by four or five times what your, your estimating is the cost.
Well, I, I can assure the board that there are no undisclosed parties with any interest in this concern. I see what he has submitted, uh, in terms of financial records and those numbers are, uh, what they are. Uh, if there's anything further that he might need to submit, and, and I think what you're getting at is, is he needs to demonstrate that there are more funds available. Do I have that correct?
Yes, I think he's gonna run into that issue with the ABCC and what my thought is, um, that, that space there has been vacant for a very long time. And we, of course, are very, very highly motivated to have a good restaurant, uh, come in there and operate that space. And so, um, if we can smooth the way for you in getting this, um, application through, um, part of what we would do that might be helpful to you is to get an application before the ABCC that would not have, uh, issues of this kind with regard to the finances or undisclosed, uh, ownership interests. So I, it might be bet, best to, uh, upgrade some of this information and make sure that it, it will pass muster.
Mm-hmm.
How much money he have?
So let, let me ask you about timeframe. Um, we can, we can certainly, uh, update the submissions pretty quickly here. Um, can you speak to figures that you might have in mind?
I'm not, I'm not in that.
But I, I understand. How much money they say the finance is showing over there?
Go ahead, sorry, I'm
Yeah, how, how much, how much is the finance that you have over there that, that we provide?
Uh, it showed, it's, there's a, um, there's a, a bank statement, uh, and here I, uh,
I believe it's at number ten, we did submit a list.
Yeah, no, I have it here. It's, um, it's a, uh, from Workers Cooperative Bank, that it's hard to know, um, it's hard to really understand it because the right-hand column with the dates of the transactions is cut off. But assuming that there are, there's a business checking, uh, account, a, um, a statement share account and a business share savings account, the whole thing, uh, doesn't come to more than, uh, you know, a hundred thousand bucks.
And, and I think that, that certain of these funds have already been expended, um, to put the, the building in the shape that it is in now. Um,
But he said that we showing, yes, hundred thousand, well, we have over three hundred thousand dollars here in, in that time.
Henry, do you want to continue this?
Well, I'm gonna stay. Well, I'm, I'm a little bit confused right now. I mean, are you saying that given the information that we're looking at, they would have a hard time getting a liquor license from the state? And we're here, and we're just alerting you to that? And we're just alerting them to that? But that's not really our job.
Well,
Our job is to either give them a license or not.
Well, I think that the, the, for us to give the license, we want the application to be complete and correct. So, um, or as I, my understanding is that there are three things that are to be considered in granting a license. One is the public need, which is clearly established by the fact that there was a restaurant with a liquor license there before. Number two is the suitability of the location, which also is satisfied by that. And the third is the suitability of the applicant. Okay, and those are all, those three things are things that we, uh, we can pass on. But I would say that if you're gonna, um, if you're gonna go forward, you may want to beef up the financial information to make it more credible.
Henry, when I'm looking here at the bank statements, if, if I'm looking at the right thing, this adds up to three hundred thousand.
It does. Well, no, but those are, those are balances, account balances and after transactions.
Right.
Okay, so look at the right-hand column. Those are not cumulative, those are subsequent, they're in series. That's why I say it's hard to understand it because there are no dates. But the dates column on the right-hand side are cut off. Well, I do, it's, you know, it's, I raise these questions and it's up to the, uh, up to the board with, what they want to do.
And what, what I will commend to the board is I, I do understand that this document does have some information cut off. It is dated at the top, September fifth of twenty twenty-three, for whatever that might be worth.
Well, then I guess our option is either to go ahead and let the ABCC deal with it and hopefully they'll update their information, or if you want, we can continue it. Um, what, what do you want to do?
I'd like to vote.
You, you need, um, public comment.
Right, right, right.
Oh, good.
Right, we need to see, is, is there, is there any public comment um, on this application?
Anybody online?
You can see, okay, great, we can't see.
No, no public comment? Alright, then if there's no public comment, do I hear a motion to close the public hearing?
Yes, move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Uh, Mr. Howell?
I'm.
Miss Ackerman?
Hi.
Mr. Dane?
Hi.
And myself, Mary Hartman, I. So I would like to, uh, move to approve the application for an all alcohol on-premise liquor license for Melendez Magana, am I saying that right? Magana Incorporated DBA Boleros to be located at one nine five Sudbury Road.
Second.
I'll take the vote. Uh, Mr. Howell?
I'm.
Miss Ackerman?
Hi.
Mr. Dane?
Hi.
And myself, Mary Hartman, I. Move to approve the application for a common victic, victor, oh, God.
Victor's license.
Thank you. For Melendez Magana Incorporated DBA Bandoleros to be located at one nine five Sudbury Road. Second, do I have a second? Mr. Howell?
I'm.
Miss Ackerman?
Hi.
Mr. Dane?
Hi.
And myself, Mary Hartman, I.
There's one more. I think we have to vote to approve the, the manager. Is the manager under the license?
I don't have that on here, do I?
We don't have that on here.
Although the application does have on it, a, an app, is includes an application for a, um, a manager. And I think we need to vote to approve that as well.
And who is it?
The, the manager is Scott Sanford, uh, that the Concord, uh, town regulations require an assistant manager as well. And we have submitted that application and that person is Louis, uh, and Helen, he's before you today.
So do I have to both or just the manager?
I think both.
I'm sorry, what's your, what's your name?
Louis Angel.
Angel?
Angel is my name.
Great, and you're the assistant?
Assistant manager.
Great, thank you. Okay, move to approve Scott Sanford as the manager and Louis Angel as the assistant manager for, um, Melendez Magana Incorporated Doing Business as Bandoleros to be located at one nine five Sudbury Road.
Second.
Mr. Howell?
I'm.
Miss Ackerman?
Hi.
Mr. Dane?
Hi.
And myself, Mary Hartman, I.
Thank you.
Thank you. So when do you open?
If, um, if everything go the way that we expecting, hopefully before New, New Year, hopefully middle of December, if things go smoothly, because again, we're doing a lot of aesthetic. We don't do anything, nothing crazy, yeah.
Well, the landlord is doing a lot of work there. I looked in the window.
Yes, they, 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 they've been good with me. They've been very good.
Okay, thank you.
We appreciate your consideration.
Thank you, thank you. We do appreciate it and again, anything we can.
We'll see you there.
Yeah. When are you opening? December, ah, okay, yeah, nice to hear. We'll see you there.
Yes.
So we skipped the liaison report, we can do that later.
Yeah.
Later.
Since we have another public hearing, right?
Yep, we do. Okay, move to open the public hearing. Do I have a second? Comcast.
Comcast.
So move to open the public hearing. Do I have a second?
Um, for the grant of location request.
Yes.
Yes, second.
This is Commonwealth Avenue one?
Yes.
Yeah.
Mark Howell, I have to take a roll call vote. Excuse me. Mr. Howell?
I'm.
Miss Ackerman?
Hi.
Mr. Dane?
Hi.
Myself, I.
Okay.
Uh, my name's Catherine Maloney. I work for Comcast. Uh, I'm here on behalf of Comcast in regard to the grant of location request that you have before you for ninety-two to one hundred Commonwealth Ave, um, access to that property. Uh, if you'd like, I'll just briefly describe what the work entails. Um, to locate and intercept existing underground Comcast conduit and place flush mount handhole. Um, I think, believe you have a drawing in your packet. Um, and the purpose is to provide access to Comcast service to the occupants of ninety-two to one hundred Commonwealth Ave and, um, we are, we have met on site with the town's engineering department representative and I believe we've discussed and are ready to comply with all the, uh, requirements of the town and, um, just seek your approval.
Does this require digging up the new paving that was just laid down on Commonwealth Avenue?
From what I understand, I spoke with my colleague who has met with your engineering department, been out there more than once. It's to coordinate the work. We need to install two vaults and that is in the sidewalk area. But we're coordinating with the ongoing work. I don't believe the full restoration of that surface has happened yet, but that's the point. We want to
It's dug up now.
coordinate that so it all looks great and, you know, we'll be a part of that.
You're right.
So what, what's your timing on doing this?
Once you approve, um, we're ready to go. So I can get back to you with specifics. I don't know exactly.
Right, because it's dug up now, so it, it's, are, are you ready to go now? Because we don't want them to put it back together and then have you dig it up again.
Right, and I think that's the idea. We want to coordinate this with the town.
Ready now.
From what I understand, we're ready to go, yeah. Whatever period of time it takes to get, you know, materials and, you know, workers ready to do it, but aside from that.
Is it, what is this coax, what is this for? Coax for? Is it for internet access?
Service to that building.
What kind of service? Cable or internet?
Whatever they want, you know.
So we don't have broadband available, our own broadband available there? I guess not.
Which building is this?
It's Deborah's, it's Deborah's on
The, uh, p- the pizzeria.
Just from the train center, you can probably speak to the broadband, but you could speak to the timing about the road being dug up already.
I think we're, we, I think we're okay there, right?
Yes.
Okay, I think we're, I'm interested in why we don't have broadband there instead of
Are they, actually, do we plan to put the top coat on that road?
No, there's
It's winter, this fall?
That's not sure, on, on the road, no, but we're still talking about the sidewalk, right? You're, you're putting this in the sidewalk and the sidewalk right now is all dug up.
So the, the, this is not underneath the roadway, it's under, only under the sidewalk.
No, it's, um, two vaults right on, as you look at the drawing, you can see, um, on the sidewalk, correct? Right near the edge.
Yep. Yep.
Okay, well, that's
So we don't have broadband there, I guess, huh?
Mark, do you know if they have broadband there?
Deborah's definitely does have it. I believe that the, uh, that the access was actually through the roof of the building because that was prior to Com- the Commonwealth Avenue reconstruction. And the adjacent buildings do too, which is probably why we're not seeing something from the, uh, Lakeland for the same.
I, I didn't really hear that, the connection's not really
Sorry, I, I'll speak up. Deborah's was and probably still is a, a Concord Light broadband customer.
Is. They are.
Yes, they have service.
Oh, they do have service.
They do.
Good, okay.
Then what, why are we putting this here?
Well, as, as we've often said, this is a competitive environment and service providers are entitled to make invest- make investments in our service platforms if they want to, and Comcast is a provider that is a reasonable option for, for businesses and residential customers alike.
And, and there are other businesses there too.
There are.
So.
And there are, there, and while the town's broadband service is, is very good, it doesn't meet the needs of every customer. And so people should have access to the options. And if they're committed to get this project done in conjunction with already scheduled road repairs, I think we should support it.
Got it. Okay, thank you. That helps. So, are we ready?
Um, any comment from the public?
Okay, move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Uh, Mr. Howell.
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman.
Aye.
Mr. Dane.
Aye.
And myself, Mary Hartman, aye. Okay, move to approve the grant of location request for Comcast of Massachusetts Incorporated to install coaxial cable to be owned and used by the petitioner along and across the public way or ways of ninety-two to one hundred Commonwealth Avenue. And in accordance with the conditions provided by the Concord Municipal Light Plant and Concord Engineering Department.
Second.
Mr. Howell.
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman.
Aye.
Mr. Dane.
Aye.
Mary Hartman, aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mike, are you ready ten minutes early? Um, I apologize for being ahead, ahead of schedule. Um, but, um, sometimes that happens, even in spite of the best light.
Yeah, but that's because we skipped some.
Why, what did I skip?
Oh, that's okay. We can do Mike first. We do, can do the liaison, liaison report later.
But that's.
No problem.
You want me here or you want?
No, no.
Good, why, Mike Lawson, I live at, I think so.
Okay, good.
I'm Mike Lawson, I live at sixteen ninety-five Lowell Road, and I'm here as a representative from the Concord Nani Network, which is a group of Concord relationship between Nani, our sister city in Hokkaido. And, uh, we have had a sister city since nineteen ninety-seven when it was approved by the town. Since then, there have been hundreds of folks from Nani and Concord who have visited one another. When the Concord folks visit here, they stay with families here in Concord. Uh, this year, uh, in October, beginning on October twenty-eighth, we'll have a delegation of eleven folks from Nani, three adults and, uh, eight, uh, schoolchildren, three high school students and five middle school students who will be staying with families, uh, in the area. Um, and I'm here today to ask for your approval of a proclamation and resigning of that agreement. The folks from Nani will arrive here on October twenty-eighth, be greeted here at the townhouse. They'll come to the townhouse on a school bus from the high school. Uh, on October twenty-ninth, uh, we will have a, a formal dinner at the Concord Art Association. And then here in the townhouse, to which you are all invited, will be the signing ceremony. We'll use Zoom to beam in folks from Japan, including the mayor of the town. We have a, a ceremony that includes, uh, remarks by the chair of the select board, uh, the mayor of Nani. Uh, and, uh, then we'll actually sign the documents that you've had in front of you in English. There's also one in, uh, Japanese, which is winging its way via FedEx, uh, to Nani as we speak. So it can be signed by the mayor in Nani and then brought back here to Concord for Mr. Dane to sign at the, uh, ceremony. So I ask for your approval of this proclamation. And in addition to that, I would like to invite you all to the signing ceremony. It's at eight in the evening. So that it's nine o'clock in the morning in Japan. And it's a Sunday here, so it's Monday and a workday in Japan. And I would also like, and which has been the practice, is to declare a day that they are here, and I would suggest, uh, October twenty-ninth, which is the Sunday of the formal ceremony as Nani Day in Japan. So that's my, uh, proposal to the select board. And if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
I, I believe that, um, proclamation, uh, or that statement is in our package.
It was, I think.
Yes.
The English version, I'm not sure the Japanese version, Mike.
Thank you for coordinating this, Mike. And, um, when is the last time that Concord folks went to Japan and when is it scheduled, uh, for the next trip?
The last time we went, and I was on the delegation, it was in two thousand seventeen. That was the twenty-fifth. This is actually the, the twenty-sixth anniversary, but we postponed it for a year from Concord. So in two thousand seven, seventeen, there was a delegation from the town, including, uh, town officials, Alan Cathcart and Marshall Rasmussen, uh, represented the town in going. And at that time, we gave, uh, the town of Nani a weather vane uh, with Minutemen on it, similar to one you might see if you're at Verro Farm. And they named, they did two things. They named a road after us. And right out here, unless it's been moved, right out here is, uh, uh, indigenous, uh, robe from the Nani people that were given, presented to me by the mayor, uh, of Nani at the ceremony in September. We don't know whether we're going to go back in two thousand twenty-four or two thousand twenty-five, but certainly we'll be going back. Again, people are very anxious to go and, uh, it's always a great, and we're hopeful that somebody from the select board will go.
I want to go. Sign me up. I really want to go.
People from the town, uh, uh, going, so. We'll keep you posted.
Great, yeah. Thanks for your.
I had the privilege of joining that delegation also as a member of the town staff in two thousand seventeen. And it was quite meaningful. It was the sixtieth anniversary of, of Nani as a township. And, uh, we got to participate in, in that event. And as Mike was saying, it, it is very meaningful and this is an important relationship. And I look forward to welcoming the citizens of Nani, uh, to Concord again this year.
Yeah. I would just add, since Mark made that remark, uh, Concord and Nani, when we had the formal ceremony, set up an endowment. And the endowment is used to have a recent graduate of the high school come to Japan for a year and teach English, learn Japanese, they're given a small allowance, a house and a car. And they're part of the government there. The current one is Jack McCarthy, but the reason I said it was Mark's son was, uh, uh, in residence, or I think in two thousand fifteen, Mark, is that?
Yeah, that's correct. We visited them too.
Yeah.
I, I would say that if you're considering twenty-four or twenty-five, um, twenty-five could be a problem because we have so much going on in.
We almost always go in October, so hopefully we'll, we'll calm down from, from the April event.
Every, in twenty twenty-five, every person who leaves town for any purpose will be to our benefit.
Okay.
I'll keep that in mind.
So my request again is for the approval of the, uh, proclamation, which, uh, reestablishes our relationship again. And then for the declaration of October twenty-ninth as Nani Day in Concord.
Good. Ready for a motion? Okay, move to approve the sister city agreement with Nani Japan and authorize the chair to sign the agreement on behalf of the board.
Second.
Mr. Howell. Ms. Ackerman.
Aye.
Mr. Dane.
Aye.
And myself, Mary Hartman, aye. Thank you.
Thank you. You can stay if you want.
So.
I think we have one more.
We're ahead of schedule. Um, do, we have Keith on at seven fifty. Do you want to do liaison reports?
Well, and, but that's the discussion of, uh, that's not a hearing and we.
That's right.
We can, we can take it up now.
Okay, okay, that's fine.
Even though we're early, Keith is here.
That's fine. That's good. Let's do it.
Okay, Keith, you're on.
Yeah, I think I'll.
Have I missed something?
Uh, well, I, if you don't mind, I could introduce.
Yes, please do, yeah.
That's okay, no problem. Uh, we've been working together. So the board has expressed interest in negotiating a development agreement with Novo Riverside's Common, the forty B project. This is a common practice at a project of the scale. The town, um, did a similar agreement for the muse in two thousand eight. Um, so I have worked with Keith Bergman, who's the chair of the Concord Municipal Affordable Housing Trust and town council to recommend an approach for how we begin this process to negotiate a development agreement. So tonight, what I'm asking and requesting is that the board, um, designate one or two members that could be volunteers to work with town staff as we, um, prepare and negotiate a draft agreement for your consideration. That draft development agreement will be brought to the board in open session or an executive session if, if the criteria is met. Um, the goal of this timing, um, and sequencing is to begin negotiations for a development agreement at the same, around the same time as the um, zoning board of appeals public hearing, so that we can understand what elements will be captured in that review process and what elements may not be appropriate to be in the public hearing process that could be captured in a development agreement. And so the goal would be to wrap up the development agreement and have that executed and considered and executed by the select board at the same time as the public hearing, um, being complete by the zoning board of appeals.
Okay, so can I ask some questions? This is new to me. So first of all, thank you for, for initiating this and thank you too, Keith. Um, so we're going to be addressing, the, the, the intent is to address points that won't be brought up during the Z B A hearings, if I heard you correctly, right?
Uh, not exa, not exactly. Some, many things, the, the public process is through the zoning board of appeals. So any, any comments or, you know, items should be brought through that process. If it's appropriate to be included in that discussion, uh, it will be kept there. If not, then we'll, and it's something that we want to see kind of captured um, in this development agreement, we would, we would have another mechanism to have an agreement with the developer to have those actions.
And when does the developer become part of these conversations? Is this ongoing with the developer?
Yes, it's ongoing with the developer.
With the Z B A process?
It's a, it's a separate conversation. Um, and the reason, um, we'd like to have one or two members advise staff and Keith, um, who's, who work on this with me, is, um, it makes more sense to kind of have some offline conversations and then present a, present a draft for the board to consider.
Okay.
Okay.
Instead of negotiating here today in, in open session, you know, it's just a different tactic.
So to initiate this, um, it would be a staff and it would be hopefully some select board members. And then, um, I did talk with Alan Peacock, the senior VP at Taurus, and mentioned this to him at the hearing he had, they had at three hundred Baker Ave, and he seemed open to it, but that was very informal.
It's ve, it's very common for developments of this scale to have a development agreement. I've done it in Maynard a couple of times and they weren't even forty Bs, so it's.
Okay, so that, okay, well, that was, that was good.
I have a couple of questions. Um, so the zoning board, the first time they're going to hear this, I think is October twenty-sixth.
Yes.
And then, I'm assuming they aren't going to decide everything at that meeting, they might continue it. Does it take, um, maybe three meetings or four meetings or something like that usually, or?
For the zoning board of appeal?
Right.
Um, I can't, I can't say.
I know, we don't know.
Yeah.
But it's, could take several months.
I think there's been a range of, of time periods for projects like this. I, I can say that the developer is very prepared and has all their materials in order and.
Right.
Um, so I don't anticipate any administrative holdups.
Right. Okay, my other question is, um, there were a number of ideas that the transportation committee had. And Megan, you wrote a memo and you incorporated most of those ideas. Um, how will those ideas get conveyed? Will they be at the C B A meeting or will they be offline in this other process?
My recommendation is for, to start with the Z B A.
Okay.
So if there are, if there are items that, that folks want to convey, um, that would be the, you shouldn't assume kind of what, what mechanism it should be captured in. You should start with the Z B A. And, and if not, then we could consider putting it in the draft.
Who would bring them up at the C B A? Would it be you or?
No, if, if a community member has a, has a item they want to speak to at, and public comment at the Z B A public hearing, they should speak at the public hearing. Um, if that's a member, if it's a collection of, um, comments from a town board or committee.
Mm-hmm.
Um, if it's individuals, the public hearing is the, is the main mechanism and process to have your voice heard on this project.
Okay, so they should be prepared on the twenty-sixth. Okay, thanks a lot.
You can also submit, um, public comment in writing if, if people would prefer.
Mm-hmm.
And the directions for how to do that are on, on the, on the webpage with Novo. I think it's the, the planning board email address, um, which may be a little.
Planning board or C B A?
It's the planning email address because the staff office, um, staff's both groups. But if you go on the Novo webpage, you can see directions for how to submit public comment electronically if people prefer that method.
Okay, thank you.
Henry, do you, what's next?
Well.
Would you like to say something?
Where do we go from here?
Well, we need to select one or two select board members.
Do you want to hear from Keith at all? Just briefly what his experience has been? I'd like to know Keith's experience.
Keith Bergman, uh, fifty-six White Ave, uh, chair of the Concord Municipal Affordable Housing Trust. Uh, thanks for putting this item on, on the agenda. It was, uh, the recommendation of the, um, trust to the select board back when you were accepting comments to go to mass housing that, uh, that there be a host community agreement to be, so that you be, are able to take up issues that the zoning board of appeals cannot resolve. That there are some things for, with a forty B application that are outside of the scope of what a zoning board of appeals can, can require under chapter forty B of the developer. Those things that they can't require though, may be things that you want to, uh, see, uh, nevertheless. And if you're in, in a, uh, negotiation with the, with the developer where the developer wants things from the town, the town wants things from the developer. If, if what the town wants can be addressed by the Z B A entirely within the four corners of its authority, that's great. There may be other things that, uh, that, uh, cannot be resolved that way. Uh, one of the, and just to, I'll mention that there were three things that the trust had put in our letter to your board, which you included in the, uh, comments that went back to mass housing. Uh, one was whether the town should defray all or a part of the affordable units, share of the projects sewer improvement fee uh, for which the trust, which we said for which the trust fund could be a source of funding for that. The reason why I mention that is that the, uh, and as it turns out, the developer has formally requested a, a waiver of that fee in the list, long list of waivers that are included in the comprehensive permit application. It's under, uh, Public Works, uh, regulations or something. Uh, however, the, the authority of the, I would submit the authority of the zoning board to waive that fee is beyond what they can do. For starters, because the town does, I don't think the town has the mechanism for waiving a fee that is, uh, because all of the revenue for the sewer come, uh, system comes from the users. Uh, it, in, in, uh, I'll give one example, in Provincetown, where I was town manager, that community made a contribution of funds from general funds, from other designated revenue sources to the bottom line of the sewer, of the sewer system, in addition to what the users paid. So that if, uh, an affordable housing project came along, which they did, we'd want to be supportive and waive whatever fee we could. We could do that because the town itself had put money in. And so it was essentially, uh, 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 it, it was it, that the town would, uh, make up the difference in whatever the fee is waived, rather than placing that on the, um, the other users, which is, you know, not fair. So what we're saying is that if you are of a mind to, uh, have that fee, uh, portion of the fee waived, you'd have to look to a public funding source. you'd have to look to a public funding source, I would submit, and that the trust could be that source. And the way to handle it, I think, would be in a, in a, in a development agreement, a host community agreement, rather than the, uh, the decision of the ZBA on the comprehensive permit. That was one example. Another one we made, and it was our recommendation that the develop, that whether the developer should make a financial contribution to the Asabat River pedestrian, uh, bridge. And our concern was that as originally proposed, it was a bridge and, and, you know, uh, uh, with a, with a cost of, uh, of, uh, two, uh, two to $3 million and now it's $8.2 million, uh, bridge and, um, multi-use trail and bridge construction. That's beyond our pay, pay grade to parse that. All, the point we're making is it's that the connection, and many have made it already, the connection between that site and West Concord Village requires a bridge. And so when's the bridge going to happen? If it can happen sooner, that's great. I understand that it is, uh, in that you're required, the significant funding is being sought through the, the Boston Region MPO with the, which is the entity that, uh, that dispenses federal highway funds. And that if you can get it from there, that's great. It's a lot, but as we said earlier in the meeting, it's a long wait. So, uh, so anyway, we're simply ra- raising the question that if there's any way to accelerate the bridge, because the sooner you connect the bridge, uh, or you have the bridge connect the site with West Concord Village, the happier everyone's going to be about, about this. So we're just raising it. A third issue that we put in there was whether, uh, whether, uh, there would be the desire to require that, uh, as many of the project's rental units as possible remain as, uh, rental units for as long as possible. And the reason for that would be is that in that way, they would all continue to be countable on the sound, the town's subsidized housing inventory. When I was town administrator in Littleton, that was a huge issue for us, the, the 40B, an unfriendly 40B, as it turned out, was a wrenching process for the community. We didn't want to have to go through it again. We were happy to be above 10% and we wanted to stay there for as long as we could. So through our development agreement, we had a contractual relationship where the developer, the, this, the, our development was, our agreement was signed in 2013 and the developer had a, uh, requirement through the 2030 US Census to keep those, uh, not just 2020, but the 2030 census to keep, uh, at least 100 of the 200 units in that project countable, uh, which would be, you know, give, give us a generation or so of, of staying above 10%. So those are some issues. You, you had identified some of your own in the letter that, that, that you wrote, uh, to, to, uh, to mass housing. And so I think that, you know, you'll, it'll be important to hear what issues are most important to the town and to be able to address those with the developer, uh, and the ones, um, and, and that the, I, I agree completely that the public hearing process before the zoning board of appeals is, will, needs to inform this whole discussion of, of an, of a, of a host community agreement with the developer that find, have all the issues raised by the community at the ZBA hearing that, you know, can help, uh, gauge which, which are the unmet needs uh, at the ZBA or, or issues that the, that the, that the board, the select board might want to have addressed.
Can I just ask one quick question to clarify?
Yeah.
The first, um, of three things that you mentioned, you said the developer has now apply, um, um, asked.
Requested a waiver. It's in his list.
Right. And there was this waiver is for the entire sewer fee or just, um?
It's for the portion, the proportion for the affordable units.
Right.
So for the 50, and I'm assuming it doesn't say 25%, but I see where, you know, 51, uh, affordable units is 25% of 201 total ones.
But we don't, we actually can't waive it. We would have to pay it.
You'd have to pay, yeah, the way, yeah, in this case, the waiver would have to be payment by.
I didn't know they had actually asked yet.
Yeah, it's, it's in a long, it's in a long list of, yeah. So anyway, so that, that's it. That's the basic approach and it's to, um, and hap- happy to help.
It gives us more flexibility.
Right.
Because there's a very strict limit on the conditions that the board of appeals can impose, right, which are just conditions that would not render the project economically unfeasible. That's essentially.
Right. And there are some things like, you know, traffic that, that you, that they're required to address, that, you know, within certain parameters. There, there, there are things that they, uh, you know, public, uh, safety issues that, that there are. And, and the advisor, is it Judy Barrett?
Yeah.
That, that, uh, the very able advisor that, uh, who, Judy Barrett, who's going to be working with the zoning board of appeals from an MHP grant fund, and she wrote our master plan in Littleton, by the way, and does a lot of housing work around them. The Commonwealth, uh, will you know, be, be able to help the, the ZBA sort out which are the, which are the issues that are in their jurisdiction and which are not.
I think this is a great idea. Um, I think we're lucky to have Keith with his experience. I think Megan's done a great job as far as getting us going. Um, I would like to participate. My only problem is, is that I'm in a butter and I wonder if that disqualifies me.
No, I, I mean, this is an informal, um, you know, working with staff to help identify and look over drafts. This is not a formal working group. Uh, the, the board will be eventually signing off on this development agreement as a.
As a board.
As a board. So I don't think so. I mean, I don't think there's any issue there.
What's your opinion?
You'd get an opinion?
You would?
But I'm, before I did that, but before I did that, I would give you.
No, I'm not a direct, I'm not a direct a butter, no, but I live nearby. I'm a neighbor. Yes, yes.
And if you, I think if, as Keith recommended, if you wanted to have an opinion on recusing yourself or voting for the, for the actual vote, but, um, I don't see a conflict in helping guide staff as we work to develop this because it's not going to be any individual person's decision. It's, the, the draft will go to the select board for the vote.
Okay. Is everybody, is, are other people okay with that? If I get an opinion as far as whether I should recuse myself at the vote?
There's no, no harm getting the opinion.
Okay, I'll get an opinion.
If you get a favorable opinion, you're in the clear regardless.
Yeah, well, yeah, so you, you have two choices. You can, you can either go to the state or you can go to town council. And I, I think, um.
What would you recommend?
Town council. I, I think some of the.
I've heard it's the lawyer of the day.
Received has.
Yes.
Not been, um, great from the state in terms.
Okay, so should I initiate that, Carrie? Well, should, but first of all, I'm jumping ahead. Is there anybody else on the, on the board that would, that would rather? I mean, I'd be eager to do this. I think I learned a lot and I'm, and I'm very supportive of Novo, the project. So, but is there anybody else?
It's fine with me. Um, I was thinking that Linda was going to want to do it because she's been doing the housing projects, but she's not with us tonight and she, this is her last year on the board, so maybe we need somebody who's going to continue longer. Oh, Linda, you are here? Linda?
Hello, this is Linda.
We can hear you now.
Okay, um, yes, I would be interested in joining it.
That's what I said.
Hello?
That's good to hear, Linda. Thank you.
So are you okay with that, Henry? If Linda and I do it? But I've got to get in, uh, or would you rather do it?
I would rather, there's, I would almost rather not do anything. But as I mentioned to you, I'm probably the only person who has any substantial experience with 40B projects, but you know, it's probably not a technical issue. And so I'm happy to have others who can do it.
You are probably our best negotiator though.
Well, I'll help you.
Okay.
Well, I, it's up to you.
Okay, I'll get an opinion. Do I initiate that, Carrie or?
I'll do that. I'll copy you on an email.
Thank you.
And Henry, we have you reserved for cell service. We need your undivided attention.
Well, well, okay.
You said you were on it.
I guess. I, I reserve the right to change my mind.
Okay. Okay, so we'll go with that for, and hopefully I'll get a good opinion.
Okay, do we need a vote for that?
I don't think so.
So it's going to be Mary and if you get the right opinion and Linda.
That's right. And if I don't, it will be Linda.
Okay.
Well, we, we need two anyway.
No, one or two.
One or two, okay.
Great.
Yeah.
I hope it works out.
Right.
Good.
So if we, does that require a vote?
No, it does not require a vote.
Okay. All right, then we're, um, Keith.
See you all at the ZBA here.
That's right.
Right.
Take notes.
And this is at Harvey Wheeler?
Yes.
1026, yep, right there.
Henry, you have some public comments.
I do. Where do I have it?
Mr. Andrews.
Oh, Mr. Andrews. I didn't expect to see a live person having a comment.
Couldn't hear what he said, but I think it's probably good.
I didn't say it, whatever.
Yeah, I'm Ray Andrews, 11 Dalton Road, Concord, and I'm here on behalf of the CHDC Concord Housing Development Corporation. And, um, we approve the Novo project or support the process moving forward and are preparing a list of suggestions that we will submit to whoever, it sounds like this committee, uh, the subcommittee, whatever, um, would be the place to send it.
Probably Megan.
This is an informal.
Yeah, wherever you choose to have that list sent, we would like to sub- submit a list of suggestions for negotiation with the content developer.
You can send that over to me. Yeah, Megan's Mudo. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Hearing none. We'll move on to what liaison reports?
Liaison reports, we do.
Yeah. Say one thing.
And, and it's, it's going to be quick, but I have, I, I'm, I just wanted to share that the, the Bruce Freeman rail trail is paved between, um, Powder Mill Road and the Sudbury line, and the Sudbury Town Line. The reason I know that is because
You live on White House?
I live there.
Right.
And it, the vibrations usually wake us up when, uh, they, and they were there on, uh, they were there yesterday. They were there on the holiday and they got it all done in a matter of hours. So the first coat of paving is done and we should, and, uh, it's unofficially open, but that hasn't stopped anyone from, from using.
So it goes all the way down, what?
Oh, it goes all the way down to 117.
Great.
Yeah, so.
Great.
And they're heading and they're paving it in, and Sudbury headed, headed our direction. But they got it all done and I just wanted to share that.
Great.
Thank you. Thank you. And I have pictures, so. Your, your usual Facebook group for the.
Mike, your usual.
Mr. Freeman Rail Trail. Great.
We're, we're, you know, we'll be, Linda is our, the last member of the trust that's still here.
That's right. Good night. Okay, let's do liaison reports.
All right, I'll go. I, I wasn't here, uh, last time, so I have several things going on. So first of all, um, I've been hearing some comments from, um, um, other citizens and, um, have some suggestions about future agenda items for this board. Um, we'd like to get, well, I'd like to hear, and I'm hoping you guys would, an update on the 250th. What, what's happening with that? What are some events? What's some fundraising, the whole thing? Uh, second one is, um, some type of strategic planning or, um, maybe a progress review on envision Concord since we're halfway through to 2030 now. What have we done? What are the next steps? Do we need a strategic plan? Whatever. And, um, the third one is, um, something we talked about since town meeting. We need to talk about sewer infrastructure in town. Um, and that kind of ties in with, um, the Mass Select Board Association is looking for suggestions from select boards on how the state, they're working with Kim Driscoll on, and Governor Healy on how can the state do a better job to help us? And we know, um, Carrie had written that letter. We've got silos. We've got one saying we can't increase our sewer capacity, um, the other saying you got to have more affordable housing. So we, I think, have the suggestion that somehow they need to work together. And since the Select Board Association is asking for these comments by, I think, October 13th even, um, I think that was the date. I think we really should send something in and, and weigh in on this. And we've gotten several letters on that, uh, several emails on that. One came yesterday or today. So those are some of my suggestions. And then the other stuff is, um, meetings I've been to. Um, so, um, the transportation, um, study mobility, uh, workshop is a week from tonight and it's a drop-in at Harvey Wheeler. You don't have to be there the whole time from 6:30 to 8:30. They want you to come give your ideas about transportation. Um, you can stay the whole time if, if you'd like. Um, this is the comprehensive transportation study with Stan Tech. This is one of the big select board goals that we were looking for a year ago. And finally, it's coming to fruition now.
Right.
Um, the 2229 Task Force, Main Street Task Force. Um, I assisted Paul Bohm speaking to the League of Women Voters the other day. And we had a pretty good turnout, but we want to get a really good turnout at two more meetings coming up. This one on the 25th at 6:30 at the townhouse. The EPA is going to give a talk about what they've cleaned up at the site. So definitely, um, try to attend that. And it's also on Zoom. And then the second one, November 9th, the task force really wants to hear from the public. That's one of the biggest things in their charge. What does the public need to know? What are your concerns and questions about this site? Before the select board makes its decision, you know, next year, a year from now, we're getting the report. And we have to make a big decision. Um, the DPW is working on a storm water utility. They're going to probably bring an article to town meeting. And it would, um, propose a user fee for all residents and commercial, including nonprofits that are used, um, for storm water. And they hope to have this ready for town meetings.
Even on public roads? Or only on private roads?
Uh, no, public roads.
You mean runoff? Is that what they're talking about?
Yeah.
You're going to have a sewer meter?
No, it's.
It's like an enterprise fund for stormwater.
Like an enterprise fund, so I don't know any.
Carrie, I think Carrie knows some details. But, do you, Carrie? Do you want to say?
Uh, not necessarily.
Okay, never mind.
Okay, so I just wanted you to know about that because that's coming up. Um, the PEG Access is, uh, working hard and they're working with the MMN now. Um, coordinating with police for, um, the 250th logistics. So, um, that, that's a good thing. And the negotiations have, um, begun with our subcommittee for the franchise agreement. And the Bruce Freeman. And the Bruce Freeman is going to be sponsoring a, uh, well, actually, um, sponsored by the Concord Prison Outreach with a letter of support from the Bruce Freeman, is going to be a contemplation space. Um, they're proposing at the prison cemetery. This is a CPC, uh, proposed project. And then there's another CPC proposed project from the Cemetery Commission um, to evaluate all the metal structures in the three historic cemeteries. So those are two separate CPC proposals. And the CPC is also updating their master plan. And that's it for my long report. Thank you.
Thank you. There is a deadline you're facing on the PEG agreement, as I, we got.
Uh, yes, but the consultant does not anticipate that we're going to make it by the deadline. The deadline is April of 2024. But for the PEG franchise agreement, she said no town ever makes it. She totally, um, anticipates we're going to need an extension. Not because we're late, but because, um, Comcast hasn't come to the table yet and it's, it's going to take a while.
Well, they had them here. We should ask them.
Different people, yeah.
Didn't that letter say that if you don't meet that deadline, that they can't, they can't provide service?
No, no, that's not correct. Carlisle is over their deadline by two years and they're, they're now in court. These things drag on a, a long time.
Okay, should I go next?
Go next.
Okay. I've gone to many different committees, but I'm going to focus on, um, two that are going to require some action, um, from the select board in the coming months. Um, the first one is the Finance Committee. Um, as you know, we were talking, we had several meetings with the Finance Committee, with the School Committee, with the moderator around, um, consolidating the operating budgets within two, into one article. So instead of having three separate articles, we would have one article that would encompass all three operating budgets. Um, the next step in that process was to go to the School Committee. They discussed it and they overwhelmingly supported it. Uh, the benefits are that they thought it would preclude any us versus them conversations around, um, spending and it would also let, um, taxpayers know the full impact of the operating budgets on their tax bills. Um, having said that, there are some concerns. Uh, the Finance Committee is going to be discussing this at their meeting on the 19th of October. And then it will come to us. Um, hopefully we can put it on the agenda for the 23rd. Um, and we'll know the Finance Committee's recommendation and we'll know whether, in fact, and we can discuss and decide whether, in fact, we want to sponsor an omnibus budget article.
Mary, um, what about the high school? How does that fit in?
It's in there too.
So it would be our assessment portion?
Yes.
Okay, but, and, and this is operating only for all three?
That's right.
And including like the joint cost centers, like everything that's operating? Okay.
So, um, again, Finance Committee is going to discuss it on October 19th and we should discuss it soon after that, so we know how to build our, our article for town. And the other thing I wanted to mention, while I'm on the subject of the Finance Committee, the Chair of the Finance Committee on behalf of the Finance Committee has sent a letter to us several weeks ago. And I think we owe them a response. Um, the, the things they addressed were visiting, um, pilot payments, visiting town rental fees, um, discussing the sale of land that we own, that would be the puberty site and the, um, Ripley School possibly. They also asked about a strategic ops plan, which Carrie mentioned earlier. And they also asked for a budget for the 250th, um, celebration. So, um, I think we should, we owe them a response, either one way or the other. Um, you know, whether this is not a priority or we are going to work on it and we can get it to them at a certain time. But when we get a letter from the Finance Committee, the Chair, I think we should respond.
Was that sent to all of us?
It was sent, it was sent, well, I, I got a copy because I'm the liaison, but it was addressed to you.
It was.
It was. Yes. So, um.
I might have gotten it, but I don't remember. Can we send that around to?
I'll ask, um, Perashar to do that, because.
Right, because it sounds like a number of those, a number of these items are things that might be relatively easy to.
Exactly.
Others, like the budget of the 250th. I have no idea.
Right.
But somebody else might know, but I don't know. Um, so I guess some we might know and some we might not know.
We, we might not know, but we could maybe have a plan or we could say this is something that we're not going to be able to do right now. I mean, we should address it one way or the other, I, I think. Um, so I'm bringing that up, um.
So can we put this on the agenda? Because maybe, just because I don't know something, maybe the liaison knows or maybe Carrie knows. Maybe we need to have a discussion about each of these things. I don't know. How do you think we should handle this?
I don't know. What do you think, Henry?
I'm thinking that once we see what's in that letter, remind ourselves of what's in that letter. Um, get somebody to draft a, a response to it that we can consider at our meeting. There you go. That's too quick. I was hoping it would take a while.
Is that your draft response already?
Now, this is the letter.
The letter.
It was sent September.
It was sent, well.
September.
So.
Just reminding.
Might I suggest at the, um, at your next meeting, October 23rd, you had asked to see a draft of my response, my, to the fiscal 25 FinCom Guidelines Information Request. We could add a, a draft of, of response to this.
That'd be great.
Wonderful. Yeah. Great.
Okay.
When you say, you mean, you would add that or it would add itself or I would add it? How does it get added?
Yeah, so we'll be reviewing the agenda for the meeting on the 23rd sometime later this week. And, and we would just include, we haven't talked about the agenda for the 23rd yet, but, um, we'll talk about that later this week and potentially add a response, a draft response to this letter, the, well, the two letters to that.
There are two letters, you're right. I only have one. The other one was about the 250th.
Yeah.
Celebration. Okay, that's the FinCom. Thank you. I'm moving on to the Economic Vitality Committee. Um, the reason I'm bringing it up to the Select Board is, uh, we are thinking of rewriting the charge to the Economic Vitality Committee because the Concord Center Cultural District Committee, which is tasked with taking grant money from the state and awarding it, um, has not been meeting regularly in the past few years. Um, they, I don't think they've taken minutes since 2018. They didn't meet at all during the pandemic and then they met once last year. So they're not really behaving as a town committee. So we're thinking that maybe it would be a good idea to take their, um, work and put it under the Economic Vitality Committee. And this is some work that Beth Williams and Ameeh Graney have been working on because they want to make sure that we've got a way to accept the money from the state, award it, uh, without having to resurrect a committee that's, um, that's not working.
Um, so wait a minute, for clarification. There's three committees that have similar needs.
Yeah.
There's the West Concord. Justice, okay, they're working really well. They're very functional.
That's right.
Right. Then there's the Concord Center, uh, Cultural Group, and they don't meet often. But then there, there's a third group.
There's a council. Council.
Um.
Concord Center Cultural Council. On the liaison, yes, it's the Concord Center Cultural.
Right, they're the group that gets the money from the state.
They get a different, a different source of money. It's very complicated. Here's something we could, we could put in the letter to the state as far as simplifying these.
Okay, but, no.
So.
But, but which one are you talking about? Concord Center?
Yes, the Concord Center Cultural District Committee.
Okay, so they don't get the money from the state?
Yes, they do. Yes, they do.
They do.
They do.
There's, there's two different, um, programs. The Cultural Council gets funds from the state to give out to others for grants.
Right.
The cultural districts, they also get funding for, for programming and cultural activities within the districts.
Okay, okay.
Very good. So it's district focused. Okay. So it's a district committee.
Just that one district in the economic vitality. And you don't put the West Concord in the economic vitality. It's sort of unbalanced.
Well, our thinking was that the, because the Concord Center District Committee is, is defined, is.
Right.
Um, that would be logical for them to be, go under the economic vitality, whereas the West Concord is working so well.
They are.
And they've got so much energy that we should let, let, let them, let them continue to work. Um, so that was the thinking. I don't think bringing both of them under the economic vitality. Okay, what are you thinking?
I'm just thinking, I don't know the answer, but it just seems unbalanced somehow. Um, I'm not sure what the right answer is, but it just, um, I'm thinking about how we were at, um, well, the, um, MBTA communities. And who were one of the people who was saying, well, West Concord is treated differently than Concord Center. And I think in this case, you would be treating the two differently and so I'm having some.
Well, there's a lot more at stake with the MBTA than.
Well, I understand that. I understand. I don't, yeah, we could talk.
I don't think we should take that and apply it to everything.
No, no.
In Concord. Okay, that's all I've got. For liaison report.
Okay, Linda? Linda, do you have anything to report?
Uh, not at this time.
Not at this time. Thank you. Mark?
Sure, I can go. Um, a couple of things just quickly on the middle school building committee. Uh, if anybody hasn't been by the site recently, they should. They're still there and not, um, construction is well underway and it's, I'm happy to report that the project is moving along. Um, as expected, we do have an opening for a citizen rep on that committee. Uh, so anyone who's interested in, in serving on Middle School Building Committee might consider, um, submitting a volunteer card on the town's website. I'll be recruiting for that position in the next few weeks. I did attend the EV test drive event. Um, it was exciting. It's exciting to see just how many makes and models of, of electric vehicles there are out there now. Um, and, you know, I would say something for almost everyone at this stage of the game, so that was encouraging. Um, there are also a couple of events coming up uh, that are related to diversity, equity and inclusion this week. Um, the first one I'll mention is, uh, tomorrow at, uh, First Parish in Concord between, uh, 1:30 and 3:30. There's a Concord Social Justice Roundtable, which will be an opportunity, um, for dialogue amongst various groups to talk about, um, making our community more welcoming. The DEI Commission will be participating in that. As well as a second event on Thursday evening, this one at Concord Academy, uh, raising consciousness and confronting social bias in Concord. That one is from 6:00 to 8:30. Uh, I'll be helping to introduce that event. Um, so, um, that, the listing for that can be found on the, uh, Events and Cultural Activities page underneath, um, the DEI Commission for anybody who's interested. I encourage people to come on out and, you know, support our efforts to, um, educate ourselves and and make Concord a more welcoming place. Um, let me just double check, but I think in the interest of time, that'll be it for tonight.
Okay.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you. Oh, look at that, was very interesting.
Really? Psychedelic there.
A psychedelic. Um, all right, uh, I think that concludes our mission for this evening.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Mr. Howell.
Hi.
Ms. Ackerman.
Hi.
Mr. Dane.
Hi.
Ms. Escobedo. And myself, Mary Hartman.
Hi.
Stand adjourned at, um, eight.